It is 7:07 PM on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, and I call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening are board members Paula Cole, Peter Tensing, Tim Paulus, and I am Crystal Brackey. Board members Christine Malik and Allegra Smieszek are unable to attend this evening's meeting, but we would like to extend a special congratulations to Allegra and her family as they are celebrating the arrival of their new baby since our last meeting. Superintendent Yunowski and student board members Diane Miseo and Lucy Luna join us at the table. And we will strive to remain focused on Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. Richfield Public Schools inspires and empowers each individual to learn, grow, and excel as we conduct our meeting this evening. There are printed copies of the agenda on the table, and the full packet is available on the richfieldschools.org website. Thanks to everyone for being with us tonight. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda before us. Is anyone prepared to move the agenda as presented?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Cole and a second by Mr. Tensing. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the agenda is approved. So we move into the Information and Proposals, Non-Auction Items section of the agenda, which this evening begins with time for public comment. We did not receive any requests for public comment this evening, so would just point out that the next opportunity to speak with the board would be at our meeting on Tuesday, February 18th, due to the President's Day holiday on Monday, the 17th. So we move next into the Superintendent Update section of the agenda, and I'll turn things over to Superintendent Yunowski to introduce our presentations and special guests this evening. Thanks for being here.
Wonderful. So we have a couple of exciting presentations, including our American Indian Education presentation and our Beacons presentation. So I am going to invite up Dr. Roby and her team to present on American Indian Education.
Good evening. I have the opportunity to just do a quick introduction and a reminder of who our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee includes. And Sarah Jespersen, who is our coordinator for American Indian students across the Richfield District. And then also Lisa Turgeon, who is one of our parents and also is a person that we reference when we are working through our work with the American Indian Parent Advisory Group. Tonight, they're going to present on the World's Best Workforce, specifically the tenants related to achievement for all of our students at each of the grade levels. Early childhood readiness, kindergarten readiness, reading well by third grade, closing the achievement gap between American Indian students and other students, graduation, and I always forget the fifth one. College and career, thank you, college and career readiness. And so they will do a presentation, an overview of the work that we've done, and then also this evening, they'll talk a little bit about the concurrence that is signed each year as part of an annual agreement between the district and our American Indian populations. So I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Jespersen.
All right, so we have one member of the parent committee here tonight. This is Lisa Turgeon, and Lisa, if you want to introduce yourself.
Sure. Hi, I'm Lisa Turgeon. I am from St. Croix Band of Ojibwe Indians in Wisconsin. My husband is from Standing Rock Sioux Tribe, and our son is Hunter, who is a seventh grader at Richfield Middle School.
We also have three other members who are not able to make it tonight, Rebecca, Rachel, and Andrea. So, yeah, next time. All right, first I wanted to go over the native student count for the year. We're up to 132 students this year. And then for the documented tribal membership forms, which is for our federal funding, which is a newer funding we've got, this will be like our fourth year applying for it. We are up to at least 42 forms. It's to be determined at this point because I still am collecting forms for the application this year. And then in the small writing, you can see I have a student breakdown of students per site, and that does now include a central ed, so the three-year-old preschool program that they have. The funding sources for Indian education are from both the state and the federal government. So the state changes each year depending on how many total students there are. This year, we got about $5,300,000. And then for federal funding, it's gone up steadily each year. It was about $10,000 this last school year, and this year I expect it will be around the same so far. And then our state Indian education plan is directly tied to the World's Best Workforce. So it's basically identifying for all children ready for school. There are, right now, five kindergarten students that we'll see if they meet grade level proficiency. Spring of 2019, it should, oh, this is from last year. 100% of them will meet grade level proficiency. For literacy, we had 13 last year who we want to meet proficiency on the spring MCA reading test, and about half of them reached that. And then just decreasing the proficiency gap. And then 100% of our high school students graduated from, our native high school students graduated this last year from Richfield High School. And we did have 50% of high school students who are native taking at least one or more AP or honors classes. So those goals were met. And like I said, the graduation rate was 100% as well. Our new program highlights for this year is we started a free school supply drive for native families in grades K through 5. Over 30 native students and families received free school supplies this past summer, so that was a big accomplishment. We've partnered with the city of Richfield to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. That collaboration is going to continue to plan a community event for Indigenous Peoples' Day in October next, or this year. It will be, it's through a grant through the Richfield Foundation, so that will be totally different funding. It doesn't tie into the state or federal at all. And that event will be open to anybody who's interested in the community, which is kind of unique because most of the events I plan for my families, the only ones that are invited are native families to those. So this will be kind of a cool thing for literally anybody that wants to come. We'll be welcome to come. We also started our birthday book for all native students in grades pre-K through 12, so all native students in the district will receive a free native-authored book. And then I also wrote into our state funding this year that we'll pay the cost of the Eagle Bluff field trip for five native students this year. And the wording I used on our Indian education program plan was, "American Indian education will support AI families by ensuring AI students obtain the same experiences opportunities offered to all students." So any students that were native and were unable to or couldn't attend the Eagle Bluff due to cost, we basically paid the way to make sure they could go on that. All right, upcoming highlights. We have our continued partnership with the South Metro Indian Education Committee, which is a committee made up of Indian education programs in the area. So like Lisa works for District 196 Indian Ed. We partner with her, Burnsville Public Schools, Lakeville, Hastings, Farmington, and SMSC, which is the Shakopee, Minnewakka, and Sioux community. We plan different family events, and then we have a powwow in the spring as a way for us to kind of pool together our resources to plan something that normally our districts wouldn't be able to put on by ourselves. We have ongoing drum and dance classes with South Metro Indian Ed Committee, ongoing college visits and family and cultural nights. The South of the River Powwow will be on May 2nd, and there will be a public hearing, which is our annual presentation on Title VI, per Title VI requirement, and that will be held this spring.
So each year, the parent committee has to vote on, it's called vote of concurrence. I think now it's called the annual compliance document. And we are going to send that around because it does need to be signed by the school board before we turn that in. And so each year, we vote to determine if the district is meeting the needs of American Indian students. It's not necessarily looking at what Sarah is doing with Indian education, but it's focusing on what the district is doing. And so we voted, yes, we concur that the district is meeting the needs of American Indian students. And I think a large part of that has to do with the level of support that the district gives Sarah to work with the native students here in the district. And so with that, I think that paper is getting passed around or will need to be signed by the board chair.
Any questions?
I have a couple. Just with the growth in numbers, I imagine some of that is just getting the organization better known throughout the district. Is there a thought that there's a lot more for us to gain in terms of growing the group?
Growing the group also...
The group has grown. It's a question, how do we close the gap of those we are not currently reaching?
So in terms of identifying students?
If they want.
Kind of, a lot of native students are misclassified in synergy in the system, so I've done a lot of work in either getting their classification changed. So it says American Indian is their primary race. And especially this last year, I worked with Kathy Rumpie, and we went through the list, and we changed kids to the correct classification, kids that I know that are native that come to my stuff, but they were marked in the system as a different ethnicity. So that has helped that number go up. And then for the federal funding, that one, not everybody's able to fill out because it requires a tribal membership, and not all of our families have access to that information or are documented members of a tribe. So that number will never be as high as just the number that we give to the state.
And Lisa, you had mentioned that with the concurrence, the committee, you know, part of the concurrence was due to the support that the district has given Sarah. And so are there plans, though? I mean, that's a baseline. Are there things that you wish could happen? Like, is there a wish list? Or bigger goals than what is currently happening? You don't have to answer now. I would encourage you to think of it.
Do you want to answer?
I honestly can't think of any right now. I kind of have, it's nice, I have the freedom, basically, to plan and use my budget the way that the parent committee and I kind of want it to be used. So like, things like the school supplies, free school supplies was a big push last year, so I was able to actually write that into the budget. And like paying for Eagle Bluff and paying for like pay-to-ride busing for some of our students that live right at the border of the walking distance, and that's a faraway for kids to walk. We pay for some kids to get that as well. And that's all stuff that parents have asked for or really want. So it's just kind of listening to the parents and seeing what they desire. Right now, I'm pretty satisfied.
Well, if you think of something.
Yeah. I guess I could think of like one thing. It'd be nice to, and this is something we could ask Sarah to do. I'm sure she can get us this information, but to kind of see what the efforts our district is making to incorporate Ojibwe and Dakota content in terms of the state standards that are being taught in the sixth grade and the second and fourth grade. And so just kind of seeing what resources the district is using, and if they are culturally relevant, that would be kind of neat to see an update. But like I said, I could probably ask Sarah, and she could probably invite someone to one of our parent committee meetings to give us an update on that, too.
And usually, I do, some schools utilize me for classroom presentations, but not all of them do. So I'm kind of curious as well what other schools or schools that I'm not in or that don't ask me ever to come in or talk with them, I'm kind of curious what they do for especially the second and fourth grade then standards. Because there are some that do ask me to come in, but not all of the schools do.
I've got a, just as you were talking about the Ojibwe and Dakota content, it just sparked a question. And you can tell me if this question resonates or not, or maybe not. Do we have, or is there a need for language teaching? And as I've been aware of challenges with younger generations not learning the language of their heritage. Is that something that...
Yeah. So in South Minneapolis and other places, there are many opportunities for Ojibwe and Dakota language tables, where we have an Ojibwe or Dakota speaker come in and just kind of conversationally talk all in their Ojibwe or Dakota, depending on which language table you're at. And we know that there are Richfield families that are traveling to South Minneapolis to participate in those programs. And so working with Sarah, as Sarah mentioned, I work with Indian education for District 196, which is Rosemont, Eagan, and Apple Valley. We collaborate a lot on this drum and dance class and on organizing a powwow each year. And so we thought, well, how can we kind of grow this? Because it's so well-attended by the South Metro Indian education communities that maybe next school year, we can make that a bigger thing by incorporating Ojibwe language or Dakota language and offer that along with the drum and dance classes that we host. So yeah, I can see that that would be something that would be great to have through our Indian Ed program. Also, a possibility would be to have an Ojibwe or Dakota language course through community education. I know that there are high school online courses that students can sign up for, for high school credit for Ojibwe language. And also, they could take classes, PSEO classes at MCTC and Augsburg University as well, maybe even at the U of M as well. There are opportunities like that, and we just kind of got to see, you know, which students want to participate in those programs and kind of make those connections with them.
I just wanted to say thank you, Sarah and Lisa. I think I probably say that every year. I always look forward to this presentation because I think the work that you're doing is so important and powerful. And in the study session that we were having legislators the hour before the board meeting started, I don't know if you were in the back when I said this, but talking about how we need to think differently about how we engage with our young people and families and community. And I see the work that you're doing as being the closest and being a model for us to look to about what it can actually look like within our district to do that in a different way. So I just wanted to make sure that I said that, and I know we've talked about that in the past in terms of how can we learn from the way that you approach and think about these relationships and the importance of building community. So I just wanted to say thank you and acknowledge that.
I would concur and say we're very lucky to have Sarah and our team working together for American Indian students.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.
We're going to invite Zach Roby back up to the, like, our Beacons presentation to talk about some of the exciting things we've been launching out with after-school and summer and future enrichment opportunities with Richfield Public Schools.
And that was a very nice launch, probably to what I was going to say. And so just as a reminder, our Beacons program is part of a three-year grant. We are in year one, and we have three schools that are participating in Beacons. That is Centennial, Richfield Centennial, Richfield Middle School, and Richfield High School. And we've invited Haley Tompkins back to talk about what we've done since the program launched in October. We are about three months in to our program. And so she'll talk a little bit about what's taking place now and then also what we expect to take place in the future, including summer 2020. So I'm going to turn it over to Haley.
Awesome, thanks. Great. Hi, everybody. Like Dr. Roby said, my name is Haley Tompkins. I work with the Beacons Network, and I'm super excited. Thanks for having me back. I'm really excited to talk with you all about some of the great things we've been doing. It's been a busy fall, so I'll try to catch you up quick. So just a quick reminder about kind of what Beacons is all about, a little refresher on the model. So some of our key goals are really around access, providing access to lots of high-quality opportunities for young people for enrichment and learning outside the classroom. We really want to give young people opportunities to develop skills and experiment with things that are interesting to them. We also really focus on school and community connectedness, right? We want to see young people and schools and communities working together as well as really also focusing on academic achievement and graduation. It was great to hear some of this conversation before because I was like, ooh, okay, this is, you know, I was vibing with it. It was great. And then finally, you know, one of the special things about Beacons that makes us kind of beyond just a traditional program is that we really try to work collaboratively and really coordinate resources across multiple partners and do some of the more kind of system-y planning stuff. Also, how we do it. So we do our work in this close partnership between an academic partner, which is a school district or even our building leaders, kind of at multiple levels, as well as with a youth development partner, where we're able to bring our expertise, bring our resources together, and really align and work together to deliver great programs. So our current Richfield Beacons Network has three core partners. So we've got Richfield Public Schools. We've got the YMCA of the Greater Twin Cities, which hosts the Richfield High School Beacon Center as well as the Beacons Network. And then the Boys and Girls Club of the Twin Cities, which hosts Centennial and RMS. And then we also are expanding more and more partners kind of every day in terms of program. I have some to share with you. First, we're working with McPhail. We're trying to build some partnerships with McPhail to deliver some music programming, as well as we're working with the parks as we're thinking about summer. And then also, wait, I wrote it on the wrong side. Dance Love Studios coming into the high school to be doing some dancing. Talked to Dez about it. Okay. Another great update is that after, I'm sure many of you know, we had kind of a, we had a semi-long competitive process, really trying to find the right fit for our Richfield Beacons Network Director. We wanted to get the right person who was going to be, who was going to really be able to lead this brand-new network. And I'm thrilled to introduce you all on the screen to Amy Villarack. Amy is currently, I may be on the airplane on her way back from some beach somewhere, so we can all shake our fists at her from, she's probably got a tan and all that. But so, these pictures really, I think, represent Amy pretty well. You've got her on the left. She's really kind of professional. She's got a great, great energy, and she's thrilled to be doing this work. And then on the right, you see Amy at camp. She's a youth worker, you know? So you see her here, that's a little campfire. So she's, you know, she's silly. She's a youth worker, but she's really on top of stuff and really excited to be working in Richfield. Most recently, she was the area director at the Boys and Girls Club for Beacons in Minneapolis, so. So updates on the centers. So first, we've got Centennial. So you'll see here, we've got enrollment. We've got about 160 young people currently enrolled, with about 90 showing up each day. We were excited about all of our numbers. One of the things you're going to see as we go through the different centers is you'll see the average daily attendance number going down, and there's a reason for that. And so I'll get to that. But so at Centennial, we're really excited. Some of their greatest kind of successes they listed were working in partnership with the building leadership, working in partnership with the folks at Centennial. It's been great. You can see here, some of the clubs that they've been having, apparently tumbling has been a hit. Folks are, the young people are really jazzed about that. So Richfield Middle School, we've got about 150 enrolled and about 50 attending per day. So I just want to share with you all, again, you'll see these numbers go down, but we're really comfortable with this for year one. One of the things we know from the research is that the older young people get, the more essential it is that we're building relationships. And they trust us, and they know us, and they know that what we have is good and useful and fun and reflects your interests. You can't just show up to high schoolers and be like, hey, here's some clubs, and they're like, cool, bye. Right? So we, so we're working on building those relationships and feeling really good about where things are. Yeah, so that's happening at the middle school. Richfield High School, we've got about 160 currently enrolled and about 30-ish young people coming per day. You'll see some clubs, including scrapbooking, is up on the board. And then, yeah, Dance Love Studio is coming in as well. And so we're really excited about what's happening at the high school. And one of the things they did is they hosted a party. Were y'all at that? They had like music and food, and they were giving out also food. And they had like, almost 200 young people came through the door, in and out, at kind of an open house inside the Beacons office. And so these are some of the different ways that we're really trying to have these like touchpoints, building relationships, building connections. And then those grow into more sustained participation and relationships. So it's happening. It just doesn't necessarily reflect in that average daily. So updates on the network. So we're in the process of beginning our data collection process. The staff from the Richfield Beacons are going to attend an M3 session, which stands for Making Meaning of Multiple Data Sets, in which they'll be looking at some data that we have from Richfield that is very preliminary, but then also some of the research and some of the other things from comparable beacon programs, which should really do some thinking and planning. I mentioned we're expanding partnerships. Another exciting update is we secured a $20,000 grant from Youth Prize to do youth participatory action research. And so this spring, we'll be building out, we'll be doing some in partnership with Young People and Rainbow Research. We'll be doing kind of a citywide needs assessment and asset mapping process. We're really excited because it's going to help us as we try to build out programs. It's going to help us really kick off our youth leadership, citywide youth leadership and youth engagement work. And we'll be thrilled to share back with you all once we have some results on that. I wanted to quick put a plug in for this Richfield Beacon celebration we've got coming up on Thursday, February 20th. It's going to be kind of a smaller intimate setting for beginning some discussion and really dreaming and learning about Beacons for community leaders, for kind of a select group of community leaders. We'd love to have you all there. We'll get to see program. You'll get to meet some other folks, hear about Beacons, and then do some dreaming about what Beacons could or should be as we continue to develop and grow here in Richfield. And so we'll send out an email with more information on that. And finally, what's next? Lidrian mentioned, we're doing summer planning. Right now, we're looking at working in partnership with summer school, running programs following summer school, and then also working with, it's called Spartan Camp. Is that right? Working with Spartan Camp as well. And yeah, so we're working also with the parks and with community ed, really trying to figure out all the different ways that we can support and kind of leverage resources to offer as many high-quality opportunities as we can. I mentioned, again, we're building partnerships. We're working with our district partners and our evaluation partners to establish kind of our strong, you know, establish a strong evaluation practice here in Richfield for our programs. We're also developing more systems, not software systems, but, you know, really systems around how can we be sure we're working together well across all the different departments? And then working with these nonprofits, partnering with the district, things like safety, communication, things like that, we're building out. And then finally, our YPAR project. So we're really excited about that. And that's it. That's what I've got. Anybody got questions for me?
Or firsthand experiences?
Yeah. How's it been going?
Well, we, it kind of just started up. We had to get some materials and stuff, but we're starting next week.
Okay, cool.
I'll update you guys.
That's great. Cool.
You had mentioned comparing to other Beacon's programs. How many programs are there in, you know, the metro or Minnesota?
Sure.
And is it beyond that as well?
So yeah, so we're in Minneapolis. We have 13 Beacons. Beacons is also in New York City with about, let me make sure I'm right, with 91 Beacons in New York City. We're in Denver, there's probably about six centers there, and then San Francisco, 27 Beacons. And so we have kind of monthly calls. We're connected, but, so it's really a model. It's not a company or anything like that. So we just, we do a lot of kind of sharing and support. Yeah. Nothing else? Great, well, thanks, everyone.
I'm just really excited that it's getting started.
That's right.
And we're going to want to hear lots more.
Yes.
At any time.
Yeah. Thank you. Fill up your data.
That's the last thing?
That is, we're going to have to.
Great. So next, we have approval of the consent agenda containing routine business items. As always, if there is an item that someone would like removed Um, as always, if there is an item that someone would like removed for individual consideration, you may request to do so at this time. Otherwise, we could have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second?
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulson, a second by Mr. Tensing. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the consent agenda is approved. So we will move on to Old Business, where we have several items before us. First of which is a second read of proposed changes to existing Board Policy 112 and Guidelines.
Right, so just as a reminder, we are beginning a process, and so we're not actually looking for a vote, even though it says approved. We are talking about emotionally approved, because we look at, um, some of the changes we are looking to review in Policy 112 and Guideline 112-1, as we continue to work on 112.2. Uh, 112.2 is our nutrition guidelines in regard to, uh, meal debt and meal payment. Uh, we have a wide range of input, um, that we are working to begin to incorporate. We also have a fresh eyes review, or some nationally renowned experts coming to take a look at our nutrition program, actually during this week. And so we anticipate, um, a report back, and then we also anticipate some really in-depth looks at some of the things that we are doing. Uh, one of the things the board had asked us to do was take a look at 112 and 112-1, um, to redo those along with, uh, 112.2. Uh, and so as you note, in 112, um, we took a look through this and felt pretty comfortable and confident that this was a good description of the intention of our nutrition program, um, and then also the guidelines. Um, we then looked, began looking at 112-1, um, and this is just a first step. Um, we utilize language from 112-2, which won't be the final language. Uh, but wanted to make sure that as we start in paragraph, um, Section 1 USDA Schools and Snacks, um, making sure that we are aligning those languages together, um, which also will need to be reviewed and revised. Um, that schools make every effort to eliminate any social stigma connected to meal balance. Um, and then under no circumstances shall any student be turned away from a USDA full meal. Um, and that, under no circumstances shall any student receive an alternative meal. That's currently the language we also have in 112-2, and we'll, we'll play with that language to try to get it cleaner, um, as we'll get it cleaner in 112-2. Um, the only other area we immediately changed in 112-1, um, which was what we know about our coffee bar that is in development, um, is, is that it does state that we shall not serve caffeine, um, or anything that might be sweetened to elementary, middle, or high school students. Um, and that was in the policy, I know. Um, and so we are suggesting a change to remove high school from that, to say that no caffeine or those types of things will be served to elementary and middle school students. Um, and that transformation would allow larger picture, the opening of the coffee bar, um, as this continues to evolve. Um, the other thing we did is we have partnered, we, we, um, ratified this policy and guideline. We work with Bloomington Public Health, and so we've also asked them, and this has yet to be incorporated, um, for a full review of what are the things that are optional and what are the things that are required from USDA funding perspective. And so in our next draft of 112-1, um, we are going to work on the things and making changes to those things that are specifically, um, required. Um, and then similarly, in 112-2, um, we have a lot of language development. We received a significant amount of information from the board. Uh, this is presented, cleaned up, but there are a lot of things then to transform, and all of the board feedback has yet to be fully integrated, um, because we're waiting for that fresh eyes review that's coming this week, um, to make sure that we have a fully overhauled set of guidelines for our next meeting.
So you're looking for any interim thoughts, questions, to help get this next version to us at the next meeting?
Absolutely.
So, uh, it's a big policy in terms of, and, and it sort of is a diverse policy in that it seems to reach into not only the nutrition area, but, well, you know, physical activity area, et cetera. So the only, um, observation that I had, uh, actually comes from Section 8, the annual reporting section.
Mm-hmm.
Did you have a similar observation? And basically, uh, I did, uh, go out to our website and found the wellness resources link. I was unable to find the, and there was the committee information, et cetera, a triennial assessment. That's what I was unable to find.
Correct, so, first off, this is, um, obviously is, this was, um, ratified initially. Um, we actually did this one in June of 2017. Um, it actually got that full overhaul, um, from 2015 to 2017, that included some of those pieces. Um, and so, at present, we have not done that.
Got it.
Um, and so that is something we would have to do. Um, and that is also-
Within five months.
Within five months to review and assess how are we doing in terms of our wellness. Um, and Mr. Holgi has begun some of this work, um, but that is something that, again, as we partner with, with Bloomington Public Health, um, we will have to do that triennial assessment of the implementation of our wellness policy.
And it, uh, yeah, alright. I'm assuming that the, the requirements around publication, et cetera, I mean, they're, they're quite prescriptive. Uh, those federal compliance or other, or sort of being in compliance with other statutes?
Um, that, again, that's the language we're working on. What are those things that are required and what are those things that are recommended? Um, to make sure that we are creating the best policy that applies to us, or revising the best policy that applies to us.
Cool.
I, I have a few comments just that I'll make, and then I'll email the rest. Um, on the, the red line in 112-1, where the last line is, "Under no circumstances shall any student receive an alternate meal." It is possible a student chooses an alternate meal, and, and we've seemed to have barred that there. And so all students, you know, so, all students receiving, you, you know, uh, all students should have the option of any USDA meals offered, or, you know, as options, right? So their, their options won't be limited or, or, or changed, it seems to be our intent.
Correct, we're not reducing choice.
We're not reducing choice, okay.
Correct.
I think the other thing that came up was, is, as Peter had mentioned, it, this is a, a wide-ranging thing in that it gets into food nutrition, and then it also gets into wellness and, and FIAID. Um, and I'd mentioned before, like, how, how is it that staff is encouraged to model water consumption? But, but within FIAID, um, you know, we, I, I think it's been our, it comes up every handful of years. Someone says, a parent will ask, "My, my student does three or four sports during the year, yet also has a FIAID component." And we, we've been pretty solid on not wishing to substitute extracurricular athletics for FIAID class. Um, but it is the case sometimes that, that students miss class and, and FIAID class, and the, the assignment to, a makeup assignment is, "Do some rigorous physical activity for a set amount of time." Um, I've been told that, that is a, it is a reasonable, uh, it's reasonable to have that activity occur as, as a makeup assignment, unless you happen to be competing in an extracurricular, participating in extracurricular athletics at, while doing so. So you could have a student who leaves and misses seventh-hour gym and, or FIAID, and, and then runs eight miles as part of a warm-up and a race and a cool-down on their own, totally fine. But if they happen to be wearing a Richfield jersey, not okay. They still have another 30 minutes of vigorous activity, which sounds crazy to me. Yeah, that, that is, that is the stance that's been, that's, that's been poured back to me. So I, I would suggest we come up with some wording, because I don't want the, the activities, interscholastic or intramural sports, to substitute for a FIAID course. But I think it's reasonable with teacher approval for an incidental course, you know, an activity that, that is serving as a makeup for a missed-class assignment, to count that. Because otherwise, we're having, you know, we might have a student missed four for, for the reason of participating in an activity of, in representing our school and our district and our community. And then th- they're supposed to come home and exercise for 30 more minutes, and that sounds strange to me. It, you know, and it's not, it's not a supervision thing, like, they just have to do whatever. And if they've already done that 30 minutes of vigorous activity, why would we not allow it to count in incidental, you know, non-material quantities? So, I, I'd, I'd like us to, to revisit that.
Agreed.
Yep.
Alright, I also ask, when's our last triennial assessment?
Mm-hmm, yeah, you had the same thought, okay.
In three months, Peter. That's, you can see the future.
I will be waiting.
Alright, and then if there's any additional feedback, please feel free to send that to me. Um, and we anticipate, um, we believe it will be in our next meeting. We might skip one, depending on how extensive and thorough the, um, feedback from our reviewers.
So next, we have another second read that is not recommended for action this evening.
That is correct. Um, we had a couple of requests from the board, and we've worked on one of those two and did not do the second component. Um, at this time, we made the structural and input-based changes at this time, but what we didn't do is utilize the comparison with Policy 977, um, which is the other one that it has to do with our cooperation of law enforcement, to make sure that there is language and linguistic alignment. Um, so between this meeting and the next meeting, we will bring those policies together and make sure our wording is the same.
And can I interrupt to be clear? Neither of us actually said what policy we were talking about just now, so it's 546.
Sorry about that. Yes, we're looking at 546, uh, MSBA-required policy, um, use of peace officers and/or crisis teams to remove students with IEPs from school grounds. Um, you'll see an "and/or" put in there repeatedly. Um, we also changed Police Liaison to ours, which is, um, Student Resource Officer. Um, and took out a couple of things that did not necessarily make sense. Um, we also added, um, in Section B, a requirement to involve a superintendent or my direct designated E. Um, to be informed and consulted in any situation requiring removal of a student prior to the implementation of this policy, should that be required. Uh, because we do believe in this district that if that was to be needed, it's a superintendent-level activity. So that would be the major changes based on input, and then we'll look at doing some language alignment in our next draft.
I, I have some more questions, actually, than I would. Just, why do we bother to clarify, um, what an SRO is? Is, a Student Resource Officer is just a peace officer, happens to be one assigned by mutual agreement to be in, within our building, but for the function of this policy, it's not important? Is it, I mean?
Um, not necessarily important.
They're already there, but they are a peace officer. We acknowledge within it, uh, a Student Resource Officer is a peace officer.
Yep.
Then we can just stop and not, I mean, that, you know, in the event that there's, there's some future estate where we don't have such a, a Student Resource Officer, we don't have to clarify it, a peace officer is a peace officer.
Okay.
Unless there's something different about them and how this policy affects them. And, and since we acknowledge that we don't necessarily have control of how they operate in terms of, um, if, if they were, if, if there was a physical, um, i- i- an aspect where they had to physically restrain a student, a peace officer does, we aren't in control of how they do it.
That is correct. However, there is different training and coordination with these Student Resource Officers who are present in our buildings, and so there may be different behavior or treatment or expectations of a law enforcement agent coming from outside the building versus one that is housed or partnered with the district formally.
Right, but I mean, they have tr- I mean, so, so, we, we might have different expectations, but at the same time, they are, they are within their, their role as a peace officer to use the means by which they're trained, correct? They don't have to do what we would like them to do, in, if, if a situation arose, or do they?
Um, do they have to? I think that the behavior of our school resource officers, um, has implications related to our relationship and our contract, where if we have to make a police call at an external officer, um, that wouldn't necessarily be related to our interaction with our school resource officers. So, I think we do have differentiated expectations of collaboration and partnership with our school resource officers. Um, they are not, um, in our schools on a daily basis performing the same, all of the same duties in the same way, perhaps, that they might out on the streets.
And, and in terms of how this occurs within, like, how is this put into practice? If someone is, is acting in such a way that, that is deemed it by the administration or someone that, that requires removal from campus, it suggests that we cannot, that the student is, we're not able to, to have a student calm down to a level of continued placement within the, the broader school community at the moment. Um, so the removal is to where? Right, is it, presumably, this is, this is removal to, we would like to think, in, into the, the control of a guardian. But it, it's not clear on there, it's just removal, right? I mean, we don't just walk, walk the student off school grounds, and there's the sidewalk, and say, "Please don't come back today."
No, but I think this would be situation-specific. There are times where our school resource officers have supported crisis teams in coming in to bring students to a hospital if appropriate. Um, there have been situations where, um, they have brought students home. Um, they have brought students to their parents' work, and I believe they have brought students to the precinct for additional support.
Okay. Just trying to understand how, like, how this is, wh- wh- where does this go? I mean, it just says removal from grounds, and it doesn't say that we, we have a requirement that the student is still, you know, and we, within some, the other document, the, the other policy that we're gonna cross-reference, I mean, we, we go out of our way a number of times to say to the student, you know, we have a requirement to act in the student's, in, in the student's interests and protecting of them. And, in this case, we, all, all we're talking about is just removing them from premises and without, you know, without tying, I guess, and, and we want to tie them together and have them coordinated better, it just doesn't seem to, to cover, like, it, it should reference them, you know, within the, within some, where we remove them to should meet some, some restricted list of acceptable places. Yeah, what are our responsibilities? When we remove a student, they should be removed to somewhere that is still safe for them.
So I'm hearing a significant alignment with our other policy, which, which does all of this and, and puts most of this language into practice.
Okay.
The, the level of, no, but I, I'm hearing, I, I appreciate the illustration, because it, it creates a different level of linguistic alignment and expectation alignment. It's not just about language, it's about, there's a set of expectations put in our other policy that we want to integrate into this particular policy to protect the students in the balance.
Correct.
Uh, so, would it be true that, um, IEPs may, um, that the individual student's IEP may have, you know, sort of individualized guidance and?
It could in this relation. Um, there are certainly things in an individual's IEP that talk about individual treatment. Um, it may go to this level, it may not, yeah.
But obviously, I mean, I think that, I mean, I would wholeheartedly support the notion that we, if we have language that is in our other policy, that is, uh, ensuring that we're acting in that student's best interest, and I would wholeheartedly support the alignment, yeah.
Correct. So probably be a couple more drafts then, because we will do that work, and then we'll take additional feedback, and that will be pretty significant.
Um, the final two items of Old Business are second reviews of our board, school, and liaison assignments for 2020. Um, and because missing two board members this evening is actually a significant percentage of our board, um, I, I recommend that we keep it at a discussion level this evening and do not take any action tonight, but instead, um, hopefully wait for our next meeting, uh, where we can have a full board present. So, with that, though, I think we can still take them one at a time for any additional comments or input that people want to give. So first up is the represent a school assignments.
I believe we are there, um, based on input. Now, again, that, they are not here, um, but we have gotten direct feedback from everybody and integrated, um, the specific requests of everyone, um, and so this does actually align. I will not say the same thing about our liaisons, and we certainly are in no rush to act either way. Um, but I think we are what, this will, we believe this will be the same document at our next meeting.
I am happy to, to defer to others if people want to take action. I'm not sure it feels urgent to do so, but-
No, I agree with you. I think, I mean, I would prefer to, to make sure that, that Allegra and Christine are in agreement with the assignments, just to save us the, the hassle of rewriting them.
Right, even if it's very unlikely to change, and obviously nothing would stop any of us from getting involved with our schools between now and whenever that vote would actually take place. Um, so, yes, let's move on to the one where we know for sure. We do not have a, a complete, um, assignment list, which are the board liaison assignments.
Alright, and so what we tried to do was put in, um, the feedback from staff that we received, um, from board members that we received, and then also put a highlighted question mark where, um, at the time of this, we weren't 100% sure. Um, we do have some additional input given, um, from board members that we can integrate, but, um, we wanna specifically focus on a couple of the question marks, and then there was also one other suggestion given. Um, we did not, until just recently, have someone, um, in the Activities Advisory and Fundraising advisories as official. However, um, I believe Ms. Brackey volunteered to fill that question mark. Um, the Community Education Advisory Council has a couple of question marks, um, and so that's something for board members to think about. On page two, we do not currently have somebody who has stepped into FPAC, um, in the Finance Fiscal Planning Advisory Committee, um, who has officially said that they would like that. Um, and then, I'll just finish up, and then, uh, two more things. Um, on the final page, Safe and Supportive Schools, and we're gonna split that into two. Um, but note that while we do have Brackey, Mallett, Smysik, um, all who have put their names in, there are two separate committees, one is a student-based committee and one is an adult-based committee. Um, so we'll, we'll separate those line items out. And then also note that the Superintendent Strategic Advisory Committee, um, which, um, is also merged, at least for the next meeting, we believe, with the large group strategic planning, also would want a rotation of board representatives, and so I'll have that conversation with board members. And then, after this spring, where we are doing the large strategic planning, it will go back into a regular quarterly meeting, in which, again, we'll want a rotation of board members.
Yeah, and by rotation, you mean?
One or two at each.
Rotating all the way through everybody.
Correct, I don't think it'd be appropriate for that to be one person. Um, but with four meetings a year, people rotating their way through.
I agree.
And I think it, that, that's what I shared with Steve, is I think that that's one where we really should strive to have at least one board member present at every meeting, because, um, I think it's helpful for us to hear alongside Steve, um, what people wanna talk about, what their experiences are, and rotating, I think, feels like the, the best way for each of us to have that level of insight.
Question on the overlap between RPS Foundation and the Activities, um, Activities Advisory and Fundraising Advisory. Uh, my understanding is that there's overlap here, and what is the structure?
I, I would think Spartan Foundation would overlap more with Activities, Fundraising, but they all, all three have to.
All three have some connection, yeah.
So, the, we went into the year with one large Activities Advisory and then decided to split it. Activities Advisory is mainly- to split it. Activities advisory is mainly focused on the wide range of activities. They have talked about policies related to activities, participation, funding, ideas around activities and engaging students in activities. The split off from there is working on the alignment of booster fundraising, of which I believe Tina Lavine has co-chaired the activities advisory component, and Lori Hummiston, who is also, I believe, has a leadership role with RPS Foundation, is helping to lead the work in regard to the fundraising advisory and booster connected advisory.
Yep. So, I mean, you've got me down for RPS Foundation, which is just fine. I'm happy to serve in that role. So you might put my name, as well as Crystal, on the activities advisory and fundraising advisory, because, I mean, and of course, Tim's role in Spartan Foundation, I mean, I don't, I mean, we just, we can all be talking, but it feels like it would be good to just have consistency.
Right. I can't make any of the activities advisors.
If that alignment makes good coherent sense, I'm completely happy for you to be the point person for that activities and fundraising.
And what I'm noticing is, I believe, well, I'm not sure, but I think we are, we are split. So every other month, I don't believe we have all the meeting dates on there. So I will double check each of those also for the activities info. I think these might be the activities, but not the fundraising dates. So we're going to need to double check the dates on there. All right. So that would leave the community ed advisory and fiscal planning. And again, we don't need answers at today's meeting, but these are then for people to determine if they want to definitely step in. And again, as a reminder, we attend as we can. And so, or we are responsible for coordinating with the leadership and bringing information that would be pertinent back.
I have conflict for both of those two.
I would be willing to put my name on fiscal planning. I would ask one of my colleagues to also share that.
Yep.
Peter would put his name down on FPAC, and he's hoping to not do that by himself?
Understandable. And I can, I have been serving on the community education advisory council for two years, and enjoy it. And I think it's a helpful window into community ed. So I can continue doing that if no one else is able to do that. Otherwise, I can be your second on FPAC.
All right. So we'll put a tentative crystal for community ed, or the second on FPAC. So we will float some of that information out to board members in my Friday communication and see if anybody wants to step in.
When does that meet, Crystal, the community?
It's, um...
Second Monday.
I left my computer, so I'm kind of blind today.
No, that's okay. It's, yeah, it is Mondays, the second Monday, but it doesn't meet every month. I think it maybe meets six times a year, roughly, and it's from six until seven thirty.
So probably every other month.
Or it's specifically during, like, the school year.
Does he, do those meetings seem like child-friendly to you?
Yes. Yes. And actually, early, early childhood education is a big part of what is covered.
So I'll be happy to take that one with my assistant, Ms. Nadia.
I think, I think they would want it, actually.
I think they probably would.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Paula and Nadia.
Does that mean you post that in back with Peter? Okay. So Paula is taking community ed, and Crystal is doubling her name in as the second person on FPAC. Wonderful. So we will adjust accordingly and bring that back. And again, I will communicate out the draft to everybody so they can see it with the question marks gone, things realigned.
Thank you. So we will now move on to our fairly extensive new business items list. First up is the state mandated pay equity report.
Yes, thank you. This is a report that we're required to file every three years. It really takes a look at what our pay equity ratio is between female-dominated classes and male-dominated classes. There are really three tests that it looks at. One is the ratio of pay or the pay rate for our male-dominated classifications and our female-dominated classifications. The second is how long it takes individuals to get to that maximum pay for each one of their classifications. And then the third one is eligibility for exceptional pay, which includes things like incentive pay, longevity pay, and those factors. The compliance report is attached to this board agenda item. We passed on all three of those areas. The standard that is required is either a zero, or 80, or above, are what passing rates are for each one of these areas. So with our underpayment ratio, we passed at 178%. So you can see 39% of our male-dominated classifications are below the predicted pay based on the statistical analysis in that report, while 22% of our female-dominated classifications are below that rate of pay. So real strong results there. Our salary range test, we passed at 119.73%, where our male-dominated classifications, it takes on average 4.6 years to get to that maximum pay rate. For our female-dominated classifications, it takes 3.84 years. So relatively close, but it's statistically significant area as well. And then our exceptional service pay test, 71% of our male-dominated classifications are eligible for some form of exceptional service pay, and 75% of our female-dominated classifications are eligible for that exceptional service pay rate. So passing at 105% on that area. So real strong results, showing a lot of equity within our salary and job classifications. And we are seeking approval tonight for that compliance report. And then that would be submitted to the state. This has to be submitted by the end of January, so hopefully we can take action here tonight.
Chair, will we approve the report as submitted?
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion or further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the pay equity compliance report is approved. Next is bid authorization for partial re-roofing at Richfield High School.
Yep. Thank you. One of our standard processes or projects is looking at parts of our roofing across the district for re-roofing as those come up. It really is a combination of looking at putting things into sequence, but then also looking at where there are more immediate needs as part of that project. This year, we are requesting to solicit bids for additional partial re-roofing at Richfield High School. We're partnering with Tremco, which is a new partner this year, is this part of the project for that solicitation of bids and coordination of that. That really includes a, both the support for the bid issue, as well as the ongoing management of those projects. We had worked with Inspect previously. As part of our work with ICS and World Architects, we did a analysis of different options around this and did some interviews with a couple of different additional partners as part of that. And so we're recommending that we engage the services of Tremco for that administration of that. And then we're seeking bids for the actual construction part of that. So we are certainly available for any questions if you have, but we would request that authorization to solicit bids, and then we'll come back to the board at a later date with that actual authorization for those bids.
I just have a question. You just mentioned, you know, how we have a different consultant on this. You know, so what is the, what is the interaction expected between them and ICS and World to make sure that while that's going on, while the rest of the building is having things going on, or that they're working in concert, there's not conflict, or it's all organized in a coherent manner?
Yep. All of this has been coordinated from the beginning, making sure that it's not, or not impacting the construction projects in any way. So there's a strong coordination of that effort. Dan Kretzinger is kind of the central point on a lot of that management of the actual boots on the ground and the work that's being done. But we've worked with Andy Faulkner from ICS to kind of make sure that this won't be at issue or put our construction project at risk, where they won't be tripping over each other in those areas. And we feel like this is something that's able to be completed and is something that, we're seeing some needs because of some pending penetrations associated with that, just to kind of mitigate any damages part of the work.
Certainly don't want a roof leak to impact the new work.
Yeah. So there's a, there's a lot of coordination that's going on as part of this analysis, and they've been partnering from the very beginning of this project, too. And I can now just kind of say, much as they did last summer, when we were completing additional roofing projects as well.
Okay. You could entertain a motion to approve the bid of authorization.
I'll move the bid authorization as presented.
I'm second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulson, a second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the bid authorization is granted.
Thank you.
Next, we'll be back to one of our earlier presentations, is approval of the contract with the Beacons Network for 2019-2020.
Yes. So just finalizing and completing the Beacons contract. Obviously, our students have already been receiving service, and we already have full agreement with them. The reason for this coming now rather than earlier, there were some details we needed to work out in regard to data sharing, and complexities around what is data that we will share with Beacons and what is data that we won't share with Beacons, and then also taking steps within the contract to decrease our overall liability to make sure that it supports our students and supports the best interest of Richfield Public Schools in every line of the contract.
Any questions?
Safe to say this was reviewed by our legal representative, and...
Multiple times.
Multiple times. All right.
I will move the Beacons agreement as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Mr. Paulson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the contract is approved. Next is approval of pay rates for positions in the district not covered by existing contracts.
Thank you. This is something that we review annually. So yes, we are setting these for the 1920 year, which is our current fiscal year. And it is something that's reviewed annually. You can see the cover page identifies the overview of those changes, basically 2% increase for our school RN, health resource coordinator, student engagement specialist, American Indian education coordinator. It also adds the safe routes to schools coordinator. Just a reminder, that was a grant that we received from the state, Minnesota Department of, Minnesota Department of Transportation. So it adds that into it. And then it also provides some increases in the ranges of pay for lifeguard, water safety assistant, and water fitness instructor within the community education categories. The attached documentation shows the rate that was in place for 1819, or the current rate, and the rate that's proposed here for the 1920 year. These are reviewed specifically for market rates as well as detailed analysis of what the pending needs are within some of our community education programs and activities and athletics programs.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll move the pay rates as presented.
Oh, second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulson, a second by Mr. Tensing. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the pay rates are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is approval of the master agreement with the classified management team through 2021.
All right. And so we work together, board negotiating team with chair, vice chair, and myself, gathering data and information in relationship to two contracts tonight, the classified management and management contracts, remaining in close alignment to the other contracts that we worked our way through, held listening sessions with them to gather input, and looking at base salary increases of 2%, similar to what we've done on multiple other contracts, and then doing some alignment. And alignment has been one of things that we have worked across groups with. And so aligning vacation days across this particular group, where there had been some stepped increases in the past, changing language to align to our other contracts related to leap year. And then also is, as this contract has only five steps, or a small number of steps on it, looking at some things to support longevity in regard to HRA, and also including retirement match particular options for people. And then one small title change to support a title that represented the work being done for executive assistant to district dating testing coordinator, and then some very small market adjustments to people as we analyze the data in regard to a couple of the positions where they were out of market. So with that, I will open it up for questions.
I don't have questions. I would just say for future, it's helpful to have red lines, so that we can see where all the specific changes were without having to go back and forth.
I will.
Thank you.
I will note that the, again, the contract is fully aligned with our other bargaining groups that we have settled with recently. And noting that, I will move that we approve the, this is the management team or classified?
It's classified.
Classified management, yep.
I will move that we approve the classified management contract as presented.
I'm second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Cole. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the agreement is approved. Next is approval of the master agreement with the management team through 2021.
So it is a similar process and a lot of similar things. Again, 2% and 2%, doing some alignment of vacation days, where there was a ranging number of vacation days for different members of this group to put them together. Again, cleaning up the leap day component, and then changing a couple of titles, director of multilingual learning to director of multilingual learning in ARCEP, director of literacy to become the director of curricular learning, and then also moving the director of marketing and communications into the management team contract. We were pleased, as we looked at the market analysis, to note that only a small, small adjustment to middle school assistant principals, and then making sure that our contract clearly lined those pieces out, and adding the similar longevity components that we added to our classified management. So again, doing a lot of work to align contracts and following similar processes across.
So how is curricular learning different from curriculum?
So in conversation with the director of literacy, learning was a significant part of that conversation. And so how do you add some titles that are often in the cabinet are director of teaching and learning.
Yes.
Director of curriculum and instruction, and trying to find that appropriate title as our director, former, after this action.
Yes.
Director of literacy, is also in social studies, gifted, does science, and is actually our only person who is currently on staff working directly with curriculum. That would, that was just the title that seemed to sum up effectively the role fills, while remaining a non-cabinet-based position.
I mean, obviously, obviously, it's not, it's not substantive. Therefore, I'm not going to let it become an issue. It just doesn't sit well, but whatever.
I'll move the contract as presented.
I'm second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulson, a second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the agreement is approved. And last but certainly not least, we have donations made to the district. So that's our last meeting.
All right. So as, as always, we are thankful for our community, highly supportive of our students. The Richfield dugout club donated $27,297.13 to athletics for the baseball program. Thank you to the dugout club. High Tech Kids donated $900 to Sheridan Hills Elementary, gifted in talented Lego League teams. Thank you to High Tech Kids. Sunshine Fund received donations from Core Mark Metals, $105. TCF Bank, BSA and Fraud Unit, $1,000. Estee Steen Kruger, $100, and Passion Church, $1,000. So we are thankful for those supporters of the Sunshine Fund. And then also, as we continue to finish up through Give Minnesota, the Sunshine Fund received donations of $490 from the following people: Aaron DeVries, $100, Kathy Waldhauser, $50, Shelley and Bill Gardner, $100, and JAMF Nation Global Foundation, $25 match to Elizabeth Tredwell's donation of $25, and an anonymous donation of $240. So again, we are thankful for those supporting our students through the Sunshine Fund.
I drank a lot of Diet Cokes at the baseball games.
Thank you. Thanks for that.
Just doing what I can. I will move that we accept the donations with gratitude.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulson, a second by Mr. Tensing. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the donations are accepted with gratitude. So we move into the advanced planning section of the agenda, as always, beginning with a legislative update. And we started our meeting a few minutes late because we were having such a great conversation with our legislators who represent Richfield Public Schools up at the Capitol. So thank you to them for spending just over an hour with us this evening. Are there other legislative items that people would like to share?
Well, obviously, the legislative preview through AMSD will be coming up this month. And so I will again extend invitation to any and all interested board members who would like to attend that. That is this first Friday. That is this first Friday of February. Is it the 7th?
I think it is.
It is the 7th. 7:30 in the morning at the Core Education Center in, I'm not sure if that's Roseville or another community.
That is in Little Cana.
Little Cana. So at any rate, I would encourage attendance. We obviously don't have specific action items to follow up on at this point in time. But I guess I know what I'm going to be railing about because that MCA thing seems like it should be just a slam dunk.
Thank you for your advocacy.
I have nothing else.
Okay. Next is time for any information or questions that members of the board would like to share with each other.
I have, I do have a question on, no, this is related in that information question. This is maybe more future, well, it's kind of a question, future agenda, I'm not sure. When is, when is the high school coming to present on guidance work?
Second meeting in February.
Second meeting in February. And do we have public comment at that meeting? Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Guidance work. I may have answered prematurely. I was referring to the student presentations from the fall, which had a lot of overlap with guidance work, but I think that's not what you meant.
Presentation and they are integrating into their overall visit? I am not sure at the moment.
Are you guys talking about the history presentations?
Yes, that's going to be February 18th.
Am I supposed to like?
I'm working with Mr. Harris. I don't know. I think he said he volunteered for that.
No, he asked me to be on it.
So he volunteered you to do that is what you're saying? Okay, so yes, that would be, that would be on the, on the 18th. So that is the second meeting in February and that was when Mr. Harris was available. And then I'm looking to see when the high school hosts. I'm not seeing that at the moment, but I will.
Okay, so that's coming up.
That is coming up, but a separate.
Yeah.
March at the earliest.
Ms. Island, you know when the high school is presenting at our board meeting? What opinion?
Um, yeah, but I will email it out.
Perfect.
But what it sounds like is that guidance is going to be a key component of that presentation.
That was my understanding based on earlier conversations.
Yes. They will be presenting and part of that will be related to guidance, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The one thing that I wanted to put a plug for that is featured on the richfieldschools.org landing page is a Richfield High School alumni survey that has been put out into the world, helping us to collect information about the lifelong impact Richfield Public Schools can have by sharing what people's experiences have been after they leave RPS. So you can go to the Richfield Schools website, find that link, and you can indicate any number of things and share whatever you feel moved to share that will help us better understand and tell the stories of our alumni after they leave Richfield Public School. So I'm really excited about that and so wanted to make sure that we shared that here at a board meeting. Anything else? Okay, our next meeting will be at 7:00 PM on Monday, February 3rd and begins with a presentation from the Richfield STEM School. As I shared earlier, the second meeting of February will be on a Tuesday, February 17th, and begins with time for public comment. I just am getting the dates all wrong. It's Tuesday, the 18th?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If Monday's the 3rd.
Okay. Finally, are there any additional items that board members would like to request for discussion on an upcoming agenda? I have one that was prompted by the, the pay rates that we approved earlier around the state routes to school. And I don't expect that to be coming anytime very soon because I know that person is going to need time just to get settled and figure out what the scope of their work is going to be. But I will be very eager to learn about their work and get some recommendations as we think about things like, you know, busing boundaries and some of the things that often come up as we have these conversations. Okay, the final item of business on the agenda is to adjourn. Is there a motion?
Slow move.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cole and a second by Mr. Paulson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the meeting is adjourned at 8:22 PM. Thank you.